Counsel Flaherty.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Linehan. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Murphy. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Presley. Counsel Wu. Counsel Yancy. And Counsel Zachem.
Great. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. And I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise. And I would ask Counsel Siomo to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation has been delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as Counsel Siomo will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Siomo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have the honor of introducing Sister Pat Andrews from the Sisters of St. Joseph. Her coming in today, we had some, sharing some stories and her reach throughout the city of Boston is kind of amazing. So as soon as she reached the dais, "Oh, yes, Sister Pat, Bill's kids were reprimanded by Sister Pat." I think she reprimanded a lot of people. We were at a recent luncheon that Counsel Murphy was at and the mayor had come and it was all disheveled and Sister Pat was in the middle of her speech and Representative Nick Collins walked in, she goes, she stops her speech and says, "Nicholas, you're late." And, and he said, "Oh, my God, this is like deja vu." So Sister Pat has been, you know, working in the city of Boston and her reach is far and wide and it's all, all about helping people. So I just want to give you a little bit of her background. Sister Pat grew up in Brockton in a loving home with her parents and was the oldest of five siblings. She attended Brockton Public Schools and was first introduced to the Sisters of St. Joseph CCD classes at St. Coleman's Church. Sister Pat attended Cardinal Spellman High and wanted to join the sisters after graduation, but her mother insisted she receive a college education. After her sophomore year of college, she said to her mother, "I listened, I went to school, but the gnawing, the gnawing of the calls that said, 'Come and see,' is still here." She entered the Sisters of St. Joseph on September 15, 1964. Since joining the sisters, she, she's been a teacher all over the city. She has taught at St. Teresa's of Avia in West Roxbury and the Cathedral High School. She has also been a teacher and principal at Our Lady of Lords in Jamaica Plain and Gate of Heaven School in South Boston. Currently, Sister Pat is the Director of the Literacy Connection. At the Literacy Connection, Sister Pat works every day teaching low-income adults how to read and write and communicate in English. And it's very impactful work that she does. And about 10 years ago, she started a citizenship class. And since that time, Sister Pat and, and her volunteers have helped 128 immigrants become U.S. citizens. I'm very proud to introduce my good friend who, we met on an elevator when I was the Director at the Senior Center and we were both going to a community meeting which we ran into each other all the time because of her activism. This is a force in our community of good. And as we were saying earlier, it's about helping people. And no one does more for people in our neighborhood than Sister Pat Andrews.
First, let me say, please, I am, I am both humbled and honored to be here with you and to pray with you. And secondly, I want to know when my mother talked to Mark. Seriously. We are all dear neighbors and we all work together. And so I am honored to offer this prayer for all of us here. To our God of many names, but always God of inclusive love, we pray. In this month of spiritual remembrances and National Thanksgiving, we pray for our loved ones in our families and for our neighbors who are active and were with us in our communities who have gone before. We pray also in this month of November for the men and the women in our armed services who have died defending the rights and the freedom that we hold dear. We give you grateful thanks, loving God, for the blessings you have bestowed upon us as a people and as a nation. A nation of beauty filled with the abundance of natural resources. A nation whose founding fathers and mothers pledged their lives, fortunes, and honor to proclaim a nation whose citizens' rights were based not on the nod of a king or a ruler, but upon the inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. All gifts from a loving Creator. We, our country, pledge to pursue liberty and justice for all. But we are often too divided across lines of race, ethnicity, and economic inequality. We are a nation of immigrants struggling to address the challenges of many new immigrants in our midst. We are an affluent society where too many live in poverty, lack health care, and the necessities of life. We are also part of a larger global community facing urgent threats to the environment that must sustain us all. These challenges are at the heart of public life and at the center of the pursuit of the common good. And so we pray, God of enduring love, may our personal faiths give us the strength to witness with courage to the challenges before us. May we be united both as elected civic leaders and responsible involved citizens and neighbors in building a city where everyone can have the opportunity to live with dignity and hope. God of sustaining love, bless our efforts as we work together so that all may be one for a future yet to come. And to this we say, amen.
Thank you, Sister Pat, for your inspiring message in that wonderful prayer. Counsel Siomo.
I pledge allegiance. (Inaudible) America, to the Republic of America, State, by nation under God, God, and God's law, we give our due interest out of us for all.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. And thank you, Sister Pat Andrews. We caught up. The poor sister had both twins for all eight years at grammar school, her 10 years at Gate of Heaven. And they, that's why I was in the principal's office back then. She is a great leader. And, you know, the women of the Catholic Church have provided so much for the city over the, over the years and the good nuns and Sister Pat leading. So thank you for that. We don't have any presentations, but I would like to recognize that we have three professors who are guests from Kumamoto University, Japan, that are here with us today.[586.64][586.64](Applause). Thank you for coming. And if there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of the last meeting, then they will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1770, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept and expend $2,500,000 to the East Boston Foundation grant from the Massachusetts Port Authority in accordance with the amended and restated payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the Massachusetts Port Authority and the city of Boston.
Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask for suspension and passage of the rules for docket number 1770. On behalf of the East Boston community, Massport created the East Boston Foundation and makes payments to the foundation based on certain mitigation milestones. Through a mitigation agreement, when Massport reaches certain milestones, they make a payment to the foundation. The payments are made by Massport via the pilot to the city for the benefit of the foundation and is used to fund local organizations in East Boston such as all the East Boston Little Leagues, the seniors at the YMCA, Zoomex. This additional $2.5 million is for mitigation for certain capital projects at Logan Airport and will be rewarded over the next five years. I ask that the body please allow a vote on this today so that this cooperation between Massport and the community may continue. This agreement will protect and enhance the community and will continue to serve the East Boston community well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1770. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 1770 has passed.
Docket number 1771, message transmitting certain information under section 17F regarding docket numbers 1508, 1511, 1506, 1507, 1510, 1512, and 1509 pertaining to lists of city personnel filed in the city, city council on September 16, 2015.
Madam Clerk, could you read the next two also?
And docket number 1772, message transmitting certain information under section 17F regarding docket numbers 1513, 1514, 1515 regarding steps being taken to eliminate disparities in facilities and services based on gender homeless and, and gender homeless and programming filed in the city of Boston on September 16, 2015. And docket number 1773, message transmitting certain information under section 17F regarding dockets numbers 1506, 1507, 1508, 1509, 1510, 1511, and 1512 pertaining to a list of active city personnel, hired, fired, promoted, and terminated, filed in the city council on September 16, 2015.
Madam Clerk, Counsel Yancy has recognized that that information is not in his packet.
That information is available and I think it was sent to Counsel Yancy by PDF.
So it is electronic.
Copy if you want that copy, but we also have.
Just so that he knows he has it before we send it to file.
So we can, if it's online, it's fine. If he needs a hot copy, we can get it for him right now.
Counsel Yancy.
The information requested through the 17F details the demographic makeup of the personnel of the city of Boston. I don't have it included in my packet. I haven't seen the PDF, but I would like to have at least the opportunity to see that before we place the matters on file. So if that can be produced, I would appreciate it. And we can come back to this later in agenda if you like, Mr. President, at your discretion.
Okay. We'll have the clerk call and ask them to bring it down and that we'll place this matter when, once you have received that. Madam Clerk, if you could move on to docket 1774, please. We'll suspend disposition of 1771, 1772, and 1773 till later in this meeting.
Docket number 1774, notice received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 6:00 a.m. until 12:55 p.m. on Wednesday, October 28, 2015.
Now, docket 1774 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action, please.
Docket number 1659, message in order to declare surplus city-owned former Public Works Department parcel property known as Washburn Street, Dorchester, 711 square feet of vacant land to transfer care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, the Boston City Council Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, we held a hearing on docket number 1659 and docket number 1660. Basically, it's property owned by the Public Works Department. What we're going to do is surplus these two parcels. To do it, it has to go to Public Facility Commission and they will put an RFPL for open space. So I urge you to vote and support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lamatina. So Counsel Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1659. Madam Clerk, we need a roll call vote for this matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancy. Counsel Yancy, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Mr. President, docket number 1659 received unanimously.
Docket 1659 has passed unanimously. Madam Clerk, docket 1660.
Docket number 1660, message in order to declare surplus city-owned former Public Works Department parcel known as Howell Street, Dorchester, 1,288 square feet of vacant land district to transfer care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is, we had a hearing on Monday on docket 1660. Basically, it's surplus property from the Public Works. We need to turn it to, the property over to Public Facility Commission so they can put an RFPL for open space. So I urge my members here to vote on this and support it, and we need a roll call. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Lamatina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1660. Madam Clerk, as we've been informed, we need a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Counsel Lamatina. Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Jackson. Counsel Jackson, yes. Counsel Lamatina.
Yes.
Counsel Lamatina, yes. Counsel Linehan.
Yes.
Counsel Linehan, yes. Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel O'Malley. Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Yancy. Counsel Yancy, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Mr. President, docket number 1660 received unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1660 has passed unanimously. Motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Docket number 1775, councilors O'Malley and Presley offered the following ordinance amending the City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 2, establishing a mechanism to determine the compensation of city councilors.
Chair recognizes Counsel O'Malley on docket 1775.
Thank you, Mr. President. As has been said, this is an ordinance amending City of Boston Code to establish a mechanism to determine the compensation of city councilors. I think as everyone very well remembers, this is something that I've cited before working alongside my colleague Counsel Presley. We had talked about this as a possible amendment to the compensation change that we voted on last week. Ultimately, there were some concerns from various sundry people that it may not be compatible to the way the order was written last week. So rather than voting on a amendment that was unclear about the validity, we decided to pursue this as a separate ordinance. This is based on the way the state legislature changes pay scale. If the Boston, Massachusetts area median income changes, the percentage is then applied to a state legislator's salary. It could go up, it could go down. I believe that's the best way we can go forward talking about our own salaries. If the city's doing well, if the city's thriving and there's an increase, that will be reflected in our pay. If the city's doing poorly and there's a decrease, that will also be reflected in our pay. Now, some of you have talked about other ideas, maybe creating a advisory review committee that would be the final arbiter of what the decision was. There are other indexing, other ways that we could do this. We won't agree on the best way to do it necessarily, but I think we all agree that the current system is flawed and we need to take this out of our own hands and come up with an objective measure. Wanted to thank again the chair of the Government Operations Committee, Counsel Flaherty, who has agreed to hold a hearing on this. Welcome, obviously, sign-ons today and amendments and thoughts going forward. Once we really flush it out, talk to the right people. One change from what we were going to introduce last week to this week, there was some concern with the administration of having the city set the compensation. So we reached out to the Boston FinCom, the Finance Review Committee, to see if they would be interested. So I think there's an opportunity here to come up with a better system going forward, which will be better for this body and better for the people of Boston. Thank again, look forward to a robust hearing. Hopefully, your ideas and input and we can work on something that makes sense going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, just, you know, reiterating the words of my good friend and colleague Counsel O'Malley. This may feel a bit like Groundhog's Day. We're still trying to advance this up the field here, looking forward to a public vetting. But the end of the day, you know, again, I do believe what Counsel O'Malley and I are putting forward, now that we'll have an opportunity for a public vetting and also to consider other ideas, but this does seem, based upon our options, to be what will ensure taxpayer predictability, what will be fair, and allow for a permanent mechanism taking this decision out of the hands of the council. So looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Counsel President. So docket 1775 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I'm going to read 1776.
Oh, yeah, please. Would you read the next three matters, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1776, Counsel Baker offered the following order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act regarding the terms of office for city councilors. Docket number 1777, Counsel Baker offered the following order approving a petition for a special law regarding an act concerning a vacancy in the office of city councillor at large. And docket number 1778, Counsel Baker offered the following order approving a petition for the special law regarding an act relative to election procedures in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Baker, on the next three matters.
Thank you, Mr. President. As chair of the Special Committee on Charter Reform, I've been asked to look at our charter and propose potential changes and/or reforms. I rise today to put forth a number of reforms to our city charter. Contrary to what has been reported over the last two years, I've had numerous meetings and conversations concerning this subject matter in an effort to figure out the best way to move forward and what topics of discussion to pursue. These efforts consisted of one working session, a meeting with the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, a meeting with individuals from the Edward J. Collins Center of Public Management, multiple meetings with our legal counsel and charter committee members, as well as conversations with Larry Decarre from Nixon PBD and John Tobin from Northeastern University. Today, I would like to roll out three home rule petitions and I will be proposing a few more in the coming, in the coming weeks. It is my hope to have one charter hearing on all proposals and vote on each docket separately. The first home rule petition is in order to approve it, in order approving a petition for a special law, an act regarding terms of city councils. This act would change the current two-year term to four years. Yesterday, only 14% of registered voters came out to vote. That's 50,807 ballots cast out of 372,898 voters. Having four-year terms will boost the voter turnout by scheduling council elections at the same time as mayoral elections. It still holds the city council responsible to voters just every four years, not every two years. As we all know, running for office every two years requires a lot of time and effort focused on organizations, campaigns, and raising money instead of devoting 100% of the time to one's job. I'm trying to switch the job to less, less thought around campaigning, which unfortunately, when we have to campaign all the time, it takes you away from your job. I believe doing your job, you should be elected by the, by the people that, that elect us. Lastly, this initiative is economically feasible. The city of Boston has spent nearly $750,000, which I think is a, is a low dollar amount. I think it was probably more than that if we dug into it on yesterday's election. Having elections every four years instead of every two will save the city my, city money, my belief. The second home rule petition is in order approving a petition for a special law, an act concerning vacancies of office of city councillor at large. Now, going to four-year, four-year terms, this act would, would require a special preliminary election if an at-large seat vacancy occurs after 365 days. So you would have, we would have one year. The number of votes between the fourth and the fifth place winner, loser during the mayoral election can be upwards of 15,000 to 20,000 votes. I believe that filling a vacancy without an election is undemocratic and should be deliberated. The voters should have an opportunity to vote at the best qualified candidates, not the person who happened, who happened to come in fifth. I understand that this will cost the city money, however, special elections is just that, special. It does not happen often and we have four-year terms. We will be able to afford a special election every once in a while. The third home rule petition is in order approving petition for a special law, an act relative to election procedure in the city of Boston. Under this law, any individual duly qualified to be a candidate for an elective office shall not be a candidate nomination for two such elective offices at the same municipal election. I believe running for two municipal offices at once is disrespectful to the voters and should be amended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Thank you for your work as the chairman of the Committee on Charter Reform. These matters will be placed in the Committee on Government Operations, all three. You'll be busy this next few months, Counsel Flaherty. That is matters 1776. That's interesting. 1777 and 1778. Good timing, Counsel Baker. Charter reform, it's a revolution. We have them all, Madam Clerk. All placed in Government Operations. Thank you. Thank you. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk. Is there a, what, someone wanted to, oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Counsel Yancy.
Yes, Mr. President. Regarding the 17F orders that was not included in any of our packages, was just delivered to me a few seconds ago.
Yep.
It's with some disappointment, Mr. President, I must request that we remand this back to the administration. The 17F is very clear in terms of the request. They request information on race and residency, which is not included or even referenced in the communications. And as you know, Mr. President, this body and the administration is very concerned that we have, we monitor at least the issue of diversity and disparities in city government. And the purpose of the 17F was to discern how we're doing in, in both of those areas. And for the administration to respond with a list of names without the information requested is puzzling. Administration is very, very well read and they understand what the 17F. The administration is very, very well-read, and they understand what the 17F was, and I've been receiving this information ever since 1984. So, I don't know why the administration apparently deliberately chooses not to reference race or residency when that's such an important issue, such an important policy issue, not only for the city council and the administration, but for the public. So, I'm asking that each of these matters with regards to personnel be remanded back to the administration. I'm happy to work with them, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to act on this today by placing it on file when, number one, it wasn't provided to us in the package, and it could be provided electronically. And it seems to deliberately exclude specific information requested about residency and ethnicity. So, I respectfully request that these matters be remanded back to the administration.
Thank you, Counsel Yancey, and those matters will be remanded back to the administration for more clarity. Thank you. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk?
Docket number 1779, Counsel Linehan--
Counsel Wu moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1779. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1779 has passed. There are no late-file matters at this time. Anybody wishing to remove matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Okay. Seeing no takers, we'll move on. There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. And before I move to memorials, I just want to congratulate all of my colleagues here today for the effort that they put in as part of the city's municipal election, and to congratulate those who won their seat back here in the council. I also want to congratulate the work of two gentlemen who together have done over 50 years, have committed 50 years of service to this city that will not be joining us again in January. And at the end of the year, in our last meeting, we'll make sure that we give appropriate time and recognition to those two individuals. But I personally, as the Chair of this body, wanted to make sure that I, you know, I recognize both Counsel Steve Murphy and Counsel Yancey for all the time and effort over those 50 years combined committed to this city on behalf of the citizens. All right, you two can rise also because I'd ask all guests and all members to rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Siomo, John J. Bennett. For Counsel Lamatina, Mary Catino. And Giovanni Colorassi. For Counsel O'Malley, James Clasby. And Edward Jones. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, November 18, at 12 o'clock noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is so adjourned. Thank you.